No, it's not.
This is.
I think there's just no second here.
I guess there isn't.
Okay. Anyway, welcome to the Village of Rybrook Planning Board Meeting. Let's rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hello there and everyone else out in TV land. My name is Rob Goodman. I'm Chair of the Planning Board. Board members also in attendance are Scott Mendelson, Amy Schoen, and Jeff Richman. Also in attendance is our Village Attorney, Robert Zitt, our Superintendent of Public Works, Michael Nowak, our Village Planning Consultant from Hardesty and Hanover, Sarah Brown, and our Planning Board Secretary who's not here but is the person that makes everything run behind the scenes, Tara Orlando. All of our documents can be found on the Village's website as well as a streaming video and information on past meetings. Our first item is a review of the March 13th and April 10th Planning Board Minutes. Oh. Sorry about that. Sorry, David.
Rob, apology.
And our Board of Trustees Liaison, David Heiser, who's the real brains behind the throne, except that... Yeah. Right here. So for the minutes, any modifications to the minutes? To either the March 13th minutes or the April 10th minutes? Can I have a motion a second to adopt both minutes?
Move. Second.
We're adopting both of the minutes.
Together.
Right?
Yeah.
Okay. Mr. Mendelson?
Yes.
Mr. Richman?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Chairman Goodman?
Yes.
Thank you.
I think 900 King Street has been adjourned to next month. So our first item is 123 North Ridge Street.
Hi, John.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, can I have a motion a second to open the public hearing?
Moved. Second.
Mr. Mendelson?
Yes.
Mr. Richman?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Chairman Goodman?
Yes.
Yeah, John, just sort of as an introduction, I think we, you know, we worked through the site plan that you amended last time.
Right.
You went to the ZBA. The ZBA approved the variances as modified.
Right, for the setback on the side of the front yard.
I think the only issue that was brought to our attention was a letter from a neighbor.
The one behind us.
That is correct. And by the way, is anyone in the public there want to speak to this application? I just want to have an idea whether anyone is out there. Okay. So it's just the letter. The neighbors weren't able to attend because... But I figured, you know, they raised issues that I wanted to give you the heads up on and, you know, you can sort of address it.
Okay, okay. All right, so... So this is the house which we saw last month. Anybody in the audience?
Everybody's got to speak into the mic, please.
Okay, all right. So these are the photos of...
I don't think it's working very well.
Which is a ranch house, which we're proposing to put a second floor on and a deck off the rear. Now, the deck off the rear is as of right, so we have no variances for it. So the only variance we got really, or we got was for the front yard setbacks because of the state of Overly District, which makes it one and a half times what the house was built for. And the height setback because the house is seven feet off the property line instead of being 10. So the house already sits and we're lined, the second floor is lining up with the first floor. So that's the house. Okay, so on the site plan, what we had also done from the original is we got rid of the K-turn in the front yard. We had put the K-turn at the bottom of the driveway, which is down here. And then we just widened the driveway a little bit here so we could park another car. And that got all our impervious out of the front yard and the driveway stays the same as far as it is coming through the front yard. And then we're adding a front porch across the front of the house and the second floor aligns with the existing house. And this is the setback line and the house is here, so it's like a two-foot, it's like two, over two and a half feet off what it should be as far as the 10-foot or since the 7, or 7.5. I forgot what it was, like 7.5. But it's like two and a half feet is what the variance was for to line up with the second floor. So that's the front of the house. It's going to have a metal roof on the porch. And then it's going to be vertical, hardy board, and then a metal roof. That's what the proposal is. And we're leaving the brick on the front under the porch and it's going to be painted. So that's the front. This is the left side of the house. So we have the front porch in the front. We have the deck coming off the rear because right now the only way to access the yard is going all the way down to the basement and out of the house. And then we go to the other side, that's the garage, and then that's the back. So on the back, we're adding the sliding glass door and the deck. And then we're adding the second floor up. So then that's... If I go to the landscape plan, which you probably don't want me to do that. I think it's perfect to mention. Okay, so basically, most of the landscaping is the buffer across the front, which we've added landscaping totally across the front. And then around the side, we did landscaping in front of the porch and along the side. And I think because of the neighbor's letter, you're going to suggest that we put arborvitae in the back.
Yes, I think that has been discussed.
Okay.
I mean, is it bad?
Yeah, no, I think that's because there are actually, right now, there are some arborvitae kind of along their terrace, which is not as a stupid place. Like, they really should be...
They're not, yeah. There are, as I understand it, there's plantings in that area, but they're low.
Right.
And then in the landscaping in the back of the house, there are also sort of low, more, you know, lower plants. So you do see, you do, you know, it's not going to solve the problem, but it's going to soften it and moderate it and, you know. I think Michael suggested it. I think Sarah agreed.
Right. So we did like green giants or something. They would kind of fill in for the bottom. At least the yard would be private, even though the deck, it would help block it in the years to come.
Right.
With something like a Leyland cypress work back there? Instead of the arborvitae?
It could work, yeah. It could work.
It's softer, actually.
Yeah.
It's, I think.
Or you mix it up back there. So it's not just like a line of arborvitae because that can sort of look...
How tall do those look?
They'll reach about 25 feet.
Yeah, so they really...
Arborvitae will get to 25 feet.
Right.
And green giants will get 30.
Yeah, I think it would be completely appropriate to mix in Leyland cypress. I don't see why not.
No, it just may make a little more diversity.
Yeah, no, well, I think a mixture would be nice and just having the straight fall of the same green plant.
I agree. I agree. So is, that makes sense?
Yeah, that would make sense. We could revise the landscaping between the rear and the property line.
Okay. I mean, I don't know what more can be done under the circumstances, really. But I appreciate the applicant's flexibility on this. Any additional questions for the applicant? Again, are there any comments from the public relating to this application? If not, then have a motion a second to close the public hearing.
Moved. Second.
Mr. Mendelson?
Yes.
Mr. Richman?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Chairman Goodman?
Yes. And Sarah, we have a resolution, Rob?
Yes.
Village of Rybrook Planning Board Resolution PB 25003, granting site plan approval for property located at 123 North Ridge Street. Whereas John G. Scarlato, architect, on behalf of the property owners Kevin and Emily Miller, submitted an application for approval of a site plan concerning the proposed second-story addition, new front porch, new rear decked, and parking area, new fence, gates, and for associated removal of impervious surface at a single-family residence located at 123 North Ridge Street. Whereas the planning board is the approval authority for this application. And the planning board referred the application to the Village of Rybrook Zoning Board of Appeals for determination on the necessary variances therewith. Whereas this is a Type 2 action under SECR. And duly advertised public hearings were held on March 13th, April 10th, 2025, and May 8th, 2025, at which time all those wishing to be heard on the application were given the opportunity. Now therefore be it resolved that the Village of Rybrook Planning Board hereby grants the site plan for the above referenced work at the property located at 123 North Ridge Street upon the following conditions.
Right, and we would probably want to add a condition relating to the screening in the back.
And that condition would be...
You know, which will be...
Subject to approval by the village engineer.
Correct. So you can make that change and circulate it to me and... But subject to that condition, is everyone in agreement? All right, can I have a motion a second to adopt the resolution as amended?
Moved. Second.
Mr. Mendelson?
Yes.
Mr. Richman?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Chairman Goodman?
Yes.
Thank you.
And John, you're back up again. Doubleheader. Well, your hard work is paying off, right?
It will. When you drive by, you see an attractive house. There you go.
Now, like with the other application, there's, you know, been a decent amount of work done on this. And I think in the last meeting, everyone seemed to be in accord that the plan made sense, that the impervious surface was being reduced, the driveway obviously was being reconfigured to avoid those poles and things like that. And that there was room for cars to turn around, but there wouldn't be parking spaces there. I think we were all in agreement with that.
Yeah, no, I think it's going to look better than just a straight driveway.
Good.
And you have a smaller curb cut like you like. So I think that, I think it will all work.
Yeah. Yeah. You can show us the diagram and then... Oh, yeah. I think we have to move to open a public hearing on this, too? Yeah, all right. I have a motion a second to open the public hearing.
Moved. Second.
Mr. Mendelson?
Yes.
Mr. Richman?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Chairman Goodman?
Yes.
Okay, so as you can see, the house is under construction. And that's the catch base and the utility pole. We thought we could use, move the utility pole, but the utility pole can't really be moved because the lines are across the street.
Right.
It was too much of a disaster to try to get Con Ed to do that. So the alternative is move the driveway, which I think actually works better. Okay, so what the proposal was that we're moving the driveway, we're moving the driveway more in front of the house because we're on the curb. I'm moving it downhill closer to the curb where the old driveway was, didn't make sense because the old driveway's hard to back out of because people come flying up the hill. So we moved it off in front. We're coming down. They could pull into the garage and then we have a hammerhead so they can pull out and then drive back up to the road. And we're doing a low retaining wall in the front. And if I go to the landscape plan, we're doing landscaping at the house, which we got approved last time. And... So that's the one, that's the one you have. So with the landscaping, we're doing a low retaining wall in here. And then we're doing a mix, your plan shows only arborvitae, but I talked to Sarah and we decided we should also add some, something more decorative. So we're going to do the hydrangeas. So we mixed in some more hydrangeas. So I didn't substitute plants, I just added a few more. So we're doing a mixture of the arborvitae and the hydrangeas. So to A, soften the telephone pole and the wire, and then in front of the wall to soften the parking. So you really can't, or the cars in the driveway, if they're pulling in or coming around. So we're doing it across the front and then down the side. So when you come up the hill, it'll all be landscaped.
And Sarah, all that's cool with you?
Yes, Mr. Scarlato sent me a plan this afternoon and it was good.
Are there any members of the public that would like to speak to this application?
Just to make sure, I think you might have said so last meeting, but Con Ed is okay with everything?
Con Ed is okay with everything and the gas line is okay with it.
Gas.
The gas line's probably the more important.
That's what I'm, the gas, that gas.
Okay, can I have a motion a second to close the public hearing?
Moved. Second.
Mr. Mendelson?
Yes.
Mr. Richman?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Chairman Goodman?
Yes. And any questions from board members? Any additional inquiry? Okay. Read the resolution.
Resolution for Planning Board Application 24007, granting amended site plan approval for property located at 35 Metalark Road. Whereas John G. Scarlato, architect, on behalf of the property owners Susan, I'm sorry, Scott and Stacy Schwartz, submitted an application for approval of an amended site plan concerning proposed modification and reconfiguration of a driveway for property situated at 35 Metalark Road. Whereas the planning board is the approval authority for this application. And the application is a Type 2 action pursuant to SECR. Whereas a duly advertised public hearing was open on May 8th and at which time all those wishing to be heard on the application were given such opportunity. And the public hearing was closed on May 8th, 2025. Now therefore be it resolved that the Village of Rybrook Planning Board hereby grants the amended site plan for the proposed driveway reconfiguration at the property located at 35 Metalark Road upon any conditions aside from the usual.
Aside from the usual.
Is it?
Yeah. Can I have a motion a second to adopt the resolution?
Moved. Second.
Mr. Mendelson?
Yes.
Mr. Richman?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Chairman Goodman?
Yes.
Thank you, John. And our last matter is Kingsfield Lot Owners Association.
I don't think that's on, actually. I don't think any of them are on.
Just raise your voice, I guess.
Good evening, Chairman Goodman and members of the planning board. My name is David Gelfar. I'm an attorney with the firm of Moss &amp; Kalish P L L C in New York and a former 17-year Rybrook resident. I represent the Kingfield Lot Owners Association, Inc., in connection with its application for site plan amendment. With me tonight is Ms. Lauren McMahon of Langen Engineering and Mr. Jim Lombardo, the president of Kingfield. As I'm sure you know, Kingfield is a community with 110 units of housing located off of King Street in what was at least known as the Rexon Office Park near Belfair. As is set forth in the materials that we have submitted, Kingfield is seeking an amendment to its site plan whereby this board would authorize a swap or trade of 4,835 square feet of impervious surface that is currently unused in the common area of Kingfield to its homeowners for use in connection with their patios, decks, or other impervious surfaces. This application has come about because 35 homes in Kingfield are not in compliance with Section 4B of the Village Board's February 13, 2018 Resolution that itself amended the PUD site plan that had previously been approved and amended. Section 4B provided that no expansions of homeowner decks were to be added to the common area of Kingfield beyond what was allowed on the PUD site plan approved in the Village Board's October 30th, 2017 Resolution. However, Section 4A of that 2018 Resolution provides that no more than 4,835 square feet of additional impervious surface coverage may be added to the common area beyond what is shown on the amended PUD plan that was approved in the October 2017 Resolution without further review by the village. As is set forth in our engineers' report and drawings, the total expanded impervious surface represented by the expanded patios of these 35 homes is 3,613.47 square feet. This is less than the 4,835 square feet of additional impervious coverage in the development's common area that is authorized by the 2018 Resolution. Drawing CS-100, which is in your packet, gives a list of all the homes for which the patio goes beyond the allowable area and the amount of excess square footage per house. As we note in our application, the square footage of the expanded patios beyond what was approved in the 2017 Resolution ranges from just 10 and a half square feet up to 450 square feet. The average is 103 square feet per patio. The median is 92 square feet, or about nine by 10. Accordingly, the association is requesting that the Village Board's 2018 Resolution be amended to authorize expansions or additions of decks, walkways, or other impervious surface coverage with respect to the 110 individual residential lots of no more than the 4,835 square feet that is shown on the amended PUD plan approved in the 2017 Resolution. In other words, the association seeks to assign or to swap the unused 4,835 square feet that is allocated to the common areas to instead be used by individual homeowners. If the board were to approve this request, there will still be 1,222 square feet available to the 75 other homeowners who have not modified their patios. The association recognizes that if its application is granted, homeowners who have expanded their patios beyond what was authorized in the 2017 Resolution will still need to legalize that expansion. Thus, such homeowners will have to pay application fees, submit plans, obtain building permits, et cetera. They will also have to resolve the outstanding violations that were issued by our building inspector. Similarly, homeowners who in the future wish to expand their patios, decks, or other impervious surface coverage will have to do so in the ordinary course and submit applications, pay the required fees, et cetera. Thank you for the opportunity to speak before you tonight. Are there any questions?
What about the other homeowners? I mean, you've got this pile of gold, which is impervious surface. And you've already, you're doling out, I don't, I can't do the percentages in my head, but you're doling out 75% of that to the people that have already broken the rules. So the other 75 homes are left with 25%. What about the other homeowners?
Well, they certainly, there will be some, you know, some square footage for them if they decide that they want to expand their patios or other impervious surface. Also, there's nothing that would stop the association from coming before this board in the future and asking to increase the amount of impervious surface coverage. As we see, you know, from the average square footage that amongst the 35, it's a rather small amount. And while I'm not the engineer, I don't think it would add, you know, a whole lot of impervious coverage and lead to a whole lot of, quote, flooding issues. But, you know, we are where we are and, you know, if people want to come before this board or ask the association to do work on their behalf, that's what we'll do.
I guess we're, as a board, we're somewhat in a quandary as to how far we can go with this. On one hand, it seems like the resolutions allow us to amend the site plan to allow for the swap that you've indicated. But then there's the additional issue, okay, what happens then? How is this impervious surface supposed to be allocated? And, you know, I think right now the board, we have differences of opinion as to how far we should go in really requiring the homeowners association to come up with a plan as to how they're going to allocate this.
Well, I would say as a preliminary matter, I mean, as a matter of reality, I mean, these patios have already been, shall we say, expanded. I mean, it would kind of make the most sense to, for better or worse, you know, what's done is done and to give the square footage to those who have, for better or worse, already used it. I mean, it would be a little tough for the homeowners association to, so to speak, take it upon itself to, you know, strip away pieces of patio and allocate it elsewhere. In fact, I would venture to say that I don't even know if they would have the power or the legal authority to do that.
But I think what Chairman Goodman is saying is as a planning board, you know, one of our key functions is planning. And, you know... And, you know, the planning's been taken away because of what the individual homeowners that have expanded their impervious surface have already done. I, I, I agree with, with Chairman Goodman. I think it, I think the homeowners association should have a plan and, and come together with both the homeowners that have expanded their impervious surface and are going to be using the 3, 3,800 square feet of their 4,800 available roughly, and in conjunction with those that haven't expanded.
Well, I, I would say that as a matter of, you know, I know we have a lot of lawyers here, I'm aware of who does what. As a matter of quote, shall we say, standing statutory authority, contractual authority, it's not as though the homeowners association can just say, hey, you other 75 people, why don't you come on down and like, let's see what you guys and women may or may not want to do. It's, it's really, as a practical matter next to impossible, we, we'll have, as you know, of course, a public hearing. We have sent out notices to all the homeowners. The requisite sign has been put up once, another sign is going to be put up again in accordance with, right, with Village, with the Village Code. And, you know, the board is very responsive. This is not a, it's not a huge development. It's 110 homes and a small board, and they do listen and have regular meetings of homeowners. The board, of course, meets. So it's a little tough to say, you know, let's, let's all 110 of us sit in a room and figure out how we're going to dole out the rest of these square feet.
Well, I just, I'm, I'm a little confused as to how 35 homes were, went and did this unseen by the board. I don't, I don't get that.
Okay, I, I think that's a very, very fair question. I think a lot of this was done, to my understanding, prior, you know, as, as we know, those of us, you know, who deal with HOAs and condos or whatnot, initially there is what's called a sponsor board, you know, until a certain number of homes are sold, the sponsor controls the board with an iron fist. And my understanding is that the vast majority of this was done either by the builder or kind of when the sponsor was in control. So the sponsor, to be blunt, what do they care? I mean, what, what do they care if people go ahead and do this? And it only came about, you know, and even the, the current board, these are, you know, hardworking, well-intentioned volunteers, but to the extent, you know, someone added, you know, 82 square feet to their patio, it's not as though they have a secret police running around, you know, snooping up on, on their neighbors. So that-
How did this, how did this issue actually come to light?
My, my understanding, and, and I'll ask Mr. Noack to correct me if I'm incorrect, is that in the vernacular, someone squealed. So somebody squealed-
A whistleblower in the community.
We could call it a whistleblower. We could just call it a, an informant. An informant went to-
Whistleblower.
A whistleblower went to Mr. Fuse, and, and, and I don't know if they knew, if they went to the trouble of reading all this materials, but somehow they said, hey, something did affect, my neighbor is expanding their patio or whatever, and Mr. Fuse went out and issued stop, stop work notices and violations. And then, you know, after that, I was kind of asked to get involved, and, and we had a, you know, lengthy discussion with, with, with Mr. Fuse and Mr. Noack, and, and council, in fact, for the board, for the village, not this gentleman, someone else, Ms. Gray. And the idea was kind of bandied about to, to do this quote swap. So it really came about from, from those meetings.
I mean, I mean, look, I think that under the resolutions, I don't see any problem in principle with the swap, which is sort of the narrow issue. And, and of course, this is sort of an introductory meeting, you know, we'll schedule a public hearing for next month, and we'll have, you know, discussions, you know, with, with staff and council about sort of what we can do and what we can't do. My suspicion is, is that if, that the HOA has sort of the authority to decide how it wants to allocate this, you know, consistent with whatever the code says. If you need additional impervious surface, that's probably going to go back to the Board of Trustees, not to us. It's going to go back to the Board of Trustees.
I would imagine that.
Right, right.
I would imagine that.
And then the issue is, if you are going to ask for an allocation of additional impervious, is that going to affect the stormwater management plan to the extent that there are going to be extra fees and charges that are going to be incurred as a result of that? Now, I don't know.
Well, I, I think those are excellent points, and that's kind of why I see this as, as what we're doing is, is, you know, going within the limits of the square footage that we have. If other homeowners came, came, came along later on and said they want to do this, it may well be that a SWIP is needed, it may well be that new studies are needed, it may well be that, I don't know, new culverts are needed, it would really be up to, up to, you know, the village engineer to determine what would be needed. But I see that as being way in the future.
I saw some, some letters or documentation about some water issues, some pooling issues. Are those alleged to be caused by the impervious surface that's been added?
No.
Yeah. Those, those, I, I understand, I'm, I'm not sure there's any connection.
Now, we were kind of surprised ourselves. We didn't really get-
Well, I mean, it's sort of, I think that's beyond our scope.
Right, right, right.
At this point, the site plan has already been approved.
If there isn't, in, if there isn't in the future a fair distribution among the remaining square footage among the remaining 75 homeowners, what kind of litigation can they bring?
Well, it's a very, very good question, from the non-attorney, no less.
Oh, she's good.
I mean, I would venture to say that the business judgment rule would really apply here. I mean, you know, the village has the authority to modify a site plan. You can modify a site plan, and in fact, the modification being sought is really within the square footage as to impervious surfaces that, that has previously been enacted. Can someone come along three, four, five years down the road and say, hey, I didn't do anything, I didn't do this, and no, you know, why should we have to do a new SWIP? It's possible.
Were you involved in the original site plan application?
What do you mean by original?
In, in 2017, when the original plat was-
No, I had nothing to do with it.
Mike, do we, or do we know why the mayor added 4B, no expansions or addition deck? You know, I mean, it's very specific as to-
That's a good point.
As to what was not supposed to be done. I mean, I think we're, I don't want to beat a dead horse here and say, you know, but it's, it's, we're having, somebody come back to us, there was a specific resolution put in place, and it's, and I'm guessing, I'm not looking at the plat, but I'm guessing it's on the plat, that no additions to the decks, no additions to the walkways, impervious surface for each of the 110 individual residential units. And here we are, that having already been done, now we're going to reward the homeowners who did it. What was the reason originally that that was, was there a specific, was it related to planning issues? Was it site water, I mean, storm water?
It's a good ques, it's actually a good question.
The language in itself is pretty self-explanatory, what the intent of that item is, okay? It's not uncommon for the Board of Trustees or the approval authority in that case to issue stipulation like that. There's another development that was built recently that has very similar language in it as well, you know, understanding that purchasers purchase properties may or may not realize what the exact terms are of what they bought into and, and wished to do additions, expansions, not realizing that there are these restrictive covenants on there. The, the planning board has a decision here to make, you know, they, you will have a decision whether you want to allow that to be approved. You may choose to say no, you know, that's a discussion amongst the four of you up here. But the intent of that is the intent for no additions, modifications, alterations, additions of generators or whatever else may be because of site constraints. The 4,800 of impervious, or whatever the exact number is, is already an allowance that's been factored into the stormwater. Okay, so there's a little buffer, if you will, and that was something that came up in other projects as well, like in the Arbers, for example, there's an allotment of impervious that may be added in the future. So, but here we are, you know?
Well, I mean, and, look, and I think that this is sort of a, a question that we will, you know, confer with council about in the interim, because I'm just not sure in terms of our authority or jurisdiction, we're a planning board, of course, but there are a lot of sort of concentric circles relating to this, because the BOT has ultimate approval authority, and then you have the HOA, and I want to get sort of a better fix on which, which organ has control over what, because I certainly don't want to overstep our grounds and create problems to the applicant unnecessarily.
Is there a mirroring statute or covenant in the HOA deck for that?
I don't know, what, what do you mean?
Like, I mean, so the HOA has its own rules, I'm, I'm sure. Does it also require HOA approval before doing the, the construction that was done to the patios, the expansions?
I believe it would have been-
Would make sense.
Under the declaration, yes.
Because I know that with, with, with Belfair, if I want to put up a fence, or I want to create a patio, I needed ARB approval.
And, and I would point out, since, you know, we both have a history there, that a lot of things like this were done at the very beginning, when people didn't know, ignored, either with a, you know, with an empty heart, with an empty head, or whatever it was. And I suspected something like that may have happened here, people move in, these, the structure of an HOA is very fluid at the beginning, again, the sponsor runs it, the sponsor is barely there, they're just selling houses. So, you know, as time goes on, every HOA tends to become more bureaucratic and institutionalized and gets their act together in terms of, you know, creating a structure for modifications.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's fairly put, because I remember in the Belfair development, one of the very, very early issues was over driveway expansion. And people just expanded their driveways to create turnarounds and things like that, which, without any approval from anybody-
There's also been tree issues. I mean, there are other developments that I've been involved with here, and Belfair also, but others that I've been counsel for. Certainly, people take it upon themselves to do what they want with trees, not really recognizing that the trees on common ground are not there.
But this is, this is unique to those issues because of the set pool, right? This, there is a set pool, even if we allow the swap, right? There's a set pool of 4,000-
Right, but what's great, though, is that you have an allowance for more. I mean, I don't, I'm not an engineer, and I'm deferring, but I mean, you have 4,835 square feet spread out throughout the common area. The common area, you know, as you can imagine, ziggs and zaggs around the houses. So here, too, this additional impervious surface is going to be, so to speak, all over the place. It's not in one slot.
No, but my point being, the difference between those issues for Belfair with, with a turnaround or a tree, is that while those affect the neighbors in the community because they are neighbors in the community, this is unique because it specifically affects what the neighbors and the other 75 homeowners can do. It, it restricts, it, 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 well, it's not, it's not-
I would say, though, that, that in fact, what people did in Belfair or wherever, when they would expand a driveway, they too were adding to impervious surface, and I, maybe it was a little less regulated back in the 90s when Belfair was approved, but I'm sure, you know, Dolf Rodfeldt or whoever in those days had rules or concepts of how much impervious surface they wanted, and doing what people did in those days to the driveways or knocking down trees had an impact on stormwater.
Well, look, if you, if you play this out, you would be able to allocate a certain amount of that 4,800 to the residents, to those 35 residents, to basically address the non-conformities. And then with, with respect to the, the other residents, if all of a sudden there's a rush of people that want patios, the, the homeowners association is going to be before the BOT requesting an amendment of the site plan, a material amendment of the site plan to increase the impervious surface.
I would, I would say perhaps and perhaps not. It's somewhat speculative, but on the other hand, I don't know what Mr. Noack at all would require in terms of stormwater. He may say you need a new SWIP.
That would be the, that would be the issue.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't want to guess, you know, he may say this is going to cost you $100,000, or who knows how many dollars to add another 1,000 square feet, or he may say it's, you know, who knows, $2,000 worth of work. So, but no, I don't think that the HOA is under an obligation under the business judgment rule to say, well, okay, we'll go to the BOT and, and come up with, you know, a whole new stormwater plan, just because a few people would like to expand their patios. I, I don't think that-
Right. Well, I mean, look, that's, that, that would be an issue between the HOA and its residents.
It's down the road. I mean, it's, 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 you know, we're here on, you know, it's not ripe, shall we say.
But just swapping the impervious surface, that issue, does that solve everything else? Does that all of a sudden make everything legal about stuff that was done without permits and whatever?
No, as I said in my, in my remarks, and as, you know, we've discussed with, certainly with Mr. Fuse and Mr. Noack, the people are going to have to pay the fines, they're going to have to come before, you know, Mr. Fuse with, with plans, with permits, they're going to have to cure their fines, their violations, do whatever they have to do. It's not, it's not an amnesty.
But is the site plan, like, you're, we're, we're kind of glossing over the fact that you've got a site plan with a specific restriction. It's been violated. Is this site, is this something, is this minor? Is this something that's going to require a whole new site plan? Let's say we don't even go over the fourth-
It's, it's actually before us because it's considered a minor amendment. This is the narrow issue of being able to allow the swap, of being able to allow the homeowners association to apply that 4,800 credit, so to speak, to the homeowners so that-
Why is that minor issue? There was this, the mayor, there's a 4B says you cannot do X, they did X. Why is that a minor amendment? I, I don't, I-
It's a precedent.
I don't-
Well, that's, I mean, that's, that's, you know, what council, council and the, and the village engineer, I mean, you know, they, they make the decision, not me, you know, where to, who hears this in the first place. And I would venture to say that given the size and the scope of the Kingfield development, 110 houses, that, that, you know, perhaps the 4,800 square feet, which is already in the bank, is, is, is a minor, is minor. I mean, we're talking, you know, we're talking 4,800 square feet for 110 houses.
If you took, if you took the non-conformities out of the picture, and the homeowners association in anticipation of future development came before us and said, look, we have this 4,800 square foot impervious surface credit. We, we think we are going to need that, let's say, over the next couple of years. We want to amend the site plan to allow us to use that. Now, there's no application of this credit to anything, but it's, but it's sort of, now the homeowners association has the authority to allocate that. While it was dormant, now they can actually use it. And, and I think that the, I think the issues that we're struggling with is how far as a board, if it's, if it's very narrow to the extent that what we are asked to do is simply approve the idea of the, the, the authority of the HOA to do the swap, that's the narrowest issue. And that would make the, the, the application before us a minor amendment to the site plan. If it is, if it is, we want, we have this in the bank now, now we want to apply it to these, these homeowners who are, have non-conformities, well, you know, how far, I mean, do we regulate that? Is that something that we would, would weigh in on? Or would, or would that be between the HOA and its residents, and potentially between the HOA and the BOT?
I'd say it's more between the HOA and, and, and the residents. I mean, you know, the, the square footage is there. If, if, if this board, you know, allows the 4,835 square feet as we're asking, then, you know, we will certainly keep track of how many people go before Mr. Fuse.
But that was supposed to be for, like, it was supposed to be for a common area. It was, like, it was supposed to be for the common area, which is a common place where everyone, but now you're saying those that violated it get all of the benefits, all the spoils. No, but not just amnesty. That's not just, not just what they get. They get, to the detriment of their neighbor, a benefit. And, and I think that as a planning board, like, that's something that went into the planning of the, the regulations that went into the site plan. It was violated. I don't, personally, I don't think that's a minor amendment when it says in the notes on a site plan, you can't do this, and then this is done. I, I don't agree that that's a minor amendment.
I, I, I agree with that.
But I also just, I, I can't get over the fact that these others 75 houses, and I do believe that people should, within the rules, be able to do whatever they want to their homes. I, that's, they pay a lot of money to live in this community, and they, they should be able to do the alterations that are- should be able to do the alterations that are within the rules and the regulations, but these people didn't, and now they're getting the benefit, and I just, I don't, I think there needs to be more of a plan here before we approve anything.
Right, well, I mean, the question then arises, quote, what type of a plan, I mean, the houses are there, the patios are there, the square footage is there, the H O A, if down the road, people come before it and say that they want to do it, the H O A's board will have to devise a mechanism for, quote, allocating, you know, allocating the additional space, and if it were to come to a point where so many people wanted a heck of a lot of square feet, then hey, maybe they'll, you know, they'll hire engineers and figure out what has to be done in terms of the stormwater, but, you know, we kind of live in, you know, this is the reality, this, you know, the perfect really is, you know, the perfect can't be the enemy of the good, if that's the expression.
I think homeowners generally aware of what's going on, has there been a meeting, like, about this, or is this something when they get notice of the public hearing, that's the first thing?
No, 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 we sent out letters, in fact, in fact, the initial letter was gone over in fine tooth comb by none other than Mr. Fuse, so we sent out letters going back, I think, to like August.
But do they get that they're not going to have the same opportunity that their neighbors have? Do they understand that point? Because that, to me, is the, probably the reason why this whole restriction was put into the site plan in the first place was probably to make sure that everyone had fair access to the same opportunity, and now they don't. Do they understand that?
For one thing, in terms of the 4,835 square feet, I think there was at the time an expectation or suspicion that more impervious surface would be used by, you know, shall we say, the fitness center or other, you know, large roadways, things of that nature, and it didn't come to pass, so, you know, here you have, as of 2018, February 2018, an amount that was set, and yet in this, you know, seven years plus have gone by, it was never used. In terms of, you know, what does each individual homeowner think, obviously, I can't say.
Well, I mean, look, we'll have, we'll schedule a public hearing, I'm sure they'll, if something they say, they'll say.
You know, we make every effort, right, we don't try to hide anything.
Yeah, I mean, you know, look, and I think this is an ongoing discussion, we'll set the public hearing, we'll confer with council, because I only do, I only want to do what we need to do, I don't want to do.
Well, that's why your step one is really at a narrow, a narrow.
I mean, that's, that's sort of the issue.
That's what we're asking for, then down the road, if people, you know, more people come up who want to do something, this is a board that's cognizant of its fiduciary duty, it's now, you know, a homeowner run.
I just can't, I can't accept that premise to, like, I don't think that, I'm not saying it's disingenuous, I just can't accept it, it's not that, well, later on, if the other neighbors want to do, no, they don't have the same opportunity as the people who have already broken the rule, so that is not how this is right now. You have people who are already at a disadvantage, and those are the rule followers, and you have people with an advantage who are the ones who broke the rules.
But, but look, if I were, if, you know, for the homeowners that are, let's say, aggrieved, if they were aggrieved homeowners, and I think your point, David, is that we don't know at this point whether anyone is aggrieved or not aggrieved, in fact, there may not be an issue at all, we really don't know, but if there were, it's not like they do not have, you know, remedies, including maybe damages, or maybe, I mean.
They must throw the board.
They have, I mean, people have the right to litigate and assert claims and claim that, you know, things are unfair and that things should be reallocated equitably, I mean, look.
But don't we have the right to say that this isn't a minor amendment to the site plan?
But that's the issue, that, I can't, I can't tell you authoritatively that we actually have that authority, we have.
I think this needs to go to the Board of Trustees, that is my feeling.
There, well, you know, we'll find out.
Well, that's, that's what council is.
We'll find out, look, that's, that's where we go through a process, right?
Right, and we certainly, you know, we applied and we ended up here before you, it's.
Right, no, no, no.
You were sent here.
No, I mean, I mean, look, we'll do, you know, what we have to do under the law and what, you know, what is within our discretion to do. I think facially, and this is really not your issue, but what's bothering us is that there's a huge moral hazard here that's been, you know, created by activities of pri, now, you've actually made sort of an interesting subtle point, although it's a little speculative, which is that this 4,800 sort of credit impervious surface may have been initially conceived of as something that could be used to create common facilities, like a meeting house or like, I don't know, a walkway or whatever.
As Mr. Nowak says, more parking.
Or park, parking.
That would have benefited.
Right, which would have benefited everybody.
And that is the thing that is bothersome to me.
But now you have, you have 35 homeowners of 110 that have been able to, they are going to be able, you're right in that they still have to go through, you know, the process of being able to legalize, just because the homeowners association can allocate that to address the impervious issue, the impervious surface issue, doesn't necessarily get them out of trouble, but, but it's, you know, I think what we're struggling with is that we don't want to necessarily benefit these 35 people at the expense of the 75 other people, and how far we can go with that, if we can go far at all, I don't know, we'll get, we'll get input from council to address it, but.
Got a hand up.
Sir, if you want to, if you want to come.
I'm just curious.
Use the mic, I'm sorry. Yeah, yeah, come up here, use the mic.
I'm a loud guy, so.
Yeah, introduce yourself.
I'm the H O A president.
Yeah.
I'm just curious, this has been going on for a long time, I'm just curious what the alternative would be.
Well, I mean, I guess the alternative would be.
Remove it.
Divide 4,800 by 110. Right, and have the, and have the homeowners that have violated it either, you know.
Rip up their patio.
Or pay, or pay money, pay a fine to the H O A. I don't, I mean.
No mechanism.
No mechanism for that.
That would free the square footage.
Yeah, I'll, look, I think that.
I guess what we were trying to.
Figure out what to do.
Yeah, because, I mean, this happened long before a board existed, and it was a bit of a free fall.
Well, I mean, look, yeah, I mean, look, one of the issues that have been raised by my colleagues is, is, if this is, if this issue is really a major issue, we're not talking about, like, say, a minor amendment, we're talking about an amendment to the site plan where additional impervious surface is going to have to be addressed, stormwater management issues are going to be addressed, well, the forum for dealing with that issue, that kind of issue at that scale would be the Board of Trustees. Now, I am not convinced yet that, that, at least for the particular issue that has been brought before us, that that needs to be addressed, but down the road, that is the body in the village that could address this issue one way or another, and it would implicate whether or not additional stormwater management measures have to be done, I mean, one doesn't know where this really goes, which I think is David's point. At this point, you know, we're simply addressing the narrow issue of whether or not that 4,800 square feet can be allocated by the homeowners association to something other than what is stated in the, in the provisional site plan, and what you, and whether or not the planning board can say, well, you can allocate it, but we want you to allocate it in this particular way, or we want a plan of allocation, I don't know, I will have to confer with council whether or not we can go that far, but ultimately, in order to address this, in order to address this problem, like, there is a hot potato here because you have a lot of other homeowners that have not benefited from putting patios in, and that's sort of like a ticking thing.
Yeah, I understand, that's right.
So, so the only way of really addressing it, I think, in an affirmative way is by, is maybe going back to the, to the B O T and, and, you know, try to address this issue if you are going to not, you know, reduce the size of the patios of those people that have already put them in.
I fear, as the president, to say, dude, you gotta rip up 200 square feet across the board, I mean, the cost that would be allocated to the, I mean, I, that's pitchforks and.
Right, I don't know, look, and I think that there are, this is a.
There's some, there's some patio issues that that's what you're struggling with.
And I think that's what Mr. Mendelson is really struggling with, is that we have a legal document and approval that stated no additional modifications, and that's what I think he's struggling with, and I don't mean to speak for you, but that's what I view, and here we are, because it's always been asked, well, how do we handle these situations? How do we handle, well, here we are, and, you know, it may come down to, yes, we could move ahead and do a common ground, it may come to no, and it may be removing X, Y, Z, but that's a discussion that you all have to deal with.
As Mr. Gelfarb knows, and being an attorney and has accomplished one, is, there's an old adage that it's better to ask for forgiveness than permission, right? Everyone knows that, but here, you've only got some people asking for forgiveness, and that is what's really bothering me.
I mean, look, the, you know, do you have any, I understand your quandary, I would have the same quandary, I don't think it's, I don't think this is an easy issue to address, I think what we're struggling with honestly is that normally, non-conformities are with respect to single-family homes where the issue is they've done something, you're not going to force them to take that wall down unless it's like a real issue because it, because the effect on the community is extremely limited. Here, the externalities are much more substantial, which is, which is, which is that there are other residents that are going to be materially affected by the fact that this.
They just can't change, but, you know.
Yeah, but what's going to happen to their home value? Their home values are less than their neighbor, I mean, you've got, you've got a big deck, a 400 square foot deck next to you, and their, like, it's just not, how is that equitable?
Well, they're not that big.
Well, somebody's got a 400 square foot addition.
Before, if, if, come up.
I'm a homeowner.
Okay, come, yeah, come.
I was going to also, I wanted to bring.
I have property that's on the list, and I just want to bring another.
Can you go to the microphone, identify?
Elizabeth Petrucci, I'm in Three Honeysuckle Lane here in Rybrook.
All right.
I just want another perspective, and I'm not a lawyer, and I don't, this has been bothering me since day one, my husband and I purchased our home in October of 23, so, sorry, 22, excuse me, we're the second owners, we're not the prime owners, so, you know, I mean, I'm assuming there was a C of O that was issued when the house was initially, you know, purchased by the people we bought it from, the patio we have is there, you know, we went through the whole due diligence process, you know, searches and everything else, and nothing came up, so I'm a little annoyed, if you will, at the village of Rybrook.
Sure, you have every right to be.
Because now I'm being told that I may have to rip out the patio, I may have to pay all these fees, I got legal recourse to go back at other people, but I just want to inject that in because I'm not the only one in that situation.
Agreed.
So, you know, there are a lot of, it's not just like there were all these people and I, you know, I said, oh, good, and from what I understand from the previous owner, you know, that they were, the builder, you know, according to them, never told them they were going to be in violation of putting out the patio that we have there, we have a lower, we have a tuck, and the patio exceeds the bottom of the overhang, which is really what the rule is, I'm not, I don't have that much extra, but we have enough, so I just want to introduce that because somewhere in this whole thing, that's got to factor into this too, because it's not that clean.
Look, I think that's a really, really good point, and I'm glad you articulated that perspective, which shows how sort of difficult this is going to be.
That's what I'm saying, it's not so clean.
But, but this is sort of how I think we should sort of handle it, we should move the application along, schedule a public hearing for next month, I want direction from council about, I have a lot of questions, both about what we should be doing, but also different contingencies, like, what, what are you guys faced with? I don't know what you are faced with, quite frankly, I don't know what it means to legalize the non-conformity, you know, for yourselves, so I think that there are just these issues that we are going to work through, we have an amazing staff with amazing lawyers that help us figure this out, you do too, I think we'll put our heads together and come up with something, I don't want to overextend our authority, but I think these issues are very significant issues down the road, and if there is, and even if we don't have the authority to say, this is what you should do and this is what you shouldn't do, even if we address the issues and get some input, if they can't be, if the problems can't be completely addressed now, there'll be at least a dialogue of being able to deal with it in the future, because the idea of kicking this down the road is going to be a big problem for everybody, it is a time bomb that is going to explode, because at some point, people are going to wake up and say, well, I'm entitled to this and I'm entitled to that, and everyone is going to be yelling and screaming at one another and throwing their lawyers at one another.
Right, it's going to be, it's going to be.
It's going to be a mess.
But thank you, thank you for that perspective.
Very important point you're bringing up.
The village has some responsibility in this, because somebody along the line has blessed this, never came up, never put any kind of lien on my property when I purchased it, so, how would I ever know?
With all due respect, I don't think that's the onus of the village to do that.
Or whatever, but there's going to be some protection.
But when you buy a home, right, you get a survey.
That's right.
And those surveys should show, and you compare that to the C O and you compare that to the site plan.
And they came back clean.
But I don't think that's the onus of the village, but your perspective is, your perspective is really well known.
Well, I think, I think, I think the practicality of it is the way, you know, David really articulated it, because I'm part of a community, like, you're part of a community, at the very, very beginning, there is, the developer that controls the board has a very, very different interest in how that community should be, and that there are a lot of decisions that are being made, it's very, the fact of the matter is, when you have developers that control the board, like, the developer controlled our board, they respond to the squeakiest reel, so if they have people that are like, well, I want to do this and I want to do that, the easiest, you know, plan of least resistance is to say, well, okay, go ahead and do it, because they don't care about what the long-term ramifications of that decision are, and it could very well be that it's really no one's fault, it's just a situation that's sort of evolved because you're dealing with a new community, you're dealing with people that are running it.
That's why I want, I do want to also speak, and, you know, with our board, our war, I mean, I think that's what they're trying, it's a messy situation, but they're trying to come up with a reasonable solution, if you will, you know, that's palpable to everybody, so I think it's not a clean situation, we do have the extra land, and I think the board, and we've had many meetings, I mean, everybody is very well aware of what's going on in Kingfield, our board has been excellent, our attorneys had meetings, you know, we all know what's going on, so I think most people are, you know, receptive to this, I mean, I mean, I've got a.
We just want to make sure the people that, all the people that know what going on, what's going on, aren't the people that just have the extra debt.
Have you ever walked our property?
No, I have not.
You should come up, because when you talk about, like, when they talk about, you know, the impervious area, the common area, I might be wrong, I don't think we can put up any more buildings, I mean, we, the way the, you know, the plan is, we put, you know, we put up, and I don't think we can put in any more parking, so our, like, our, you know, we're homes, if you will.
Right.
So our area with all this stuff is like kind of all the backyards and everything else, which everyone can walk, so it's not, you know, like, we all, you know, so, the being that like.
There's not, there's not a floor plate that was meant for additional buildings.
But, but you say that in the face of a specific restriction that says, don't do this.
But, like, everyone has access, you can walk in back of my house, you know, like, that's the common area, you know, we.
Well.
So, you know, and I mean, so I don't know, I'm just saying, it's not like we've given up all this land that we're going to build, I mean, I don't think you can build in there.
Yeah.
You know, anymore.
I think, I think that's a fair point, and I think your input has been.
And I mean, you come and walk, like, you see, you know, my two feet over, I mean, who's going to really use that, I mean, then they're in my, they're really in my house, you know what I'm saying, I mean, you know, it's not like somebody has gone out 50 feet, I don't think anybody's done anything like that up there to kind of come and look at this, I mean, I would just swear your due diligence, encourage you to come and gather up there, just kind of look, because I think it gives you different perspectives to what, you know, our attorney and our board is.
Okay, sure.
So, thank you for your time.
That's a good point.
I would, I was thinking of, oh, sorry, sorry, sorry.
Hi, I'm also a homeowner.
Oh, yeah, speaking to the microphone?
I'm also a homeowner, and there's just lots of different situations, and it's not like you, you know, you're giving forth this, you know, feeling that, you know, those of us that put patios and just broke the. us that put patios and just broke the rules because we didn't want to, you know, comply. We actually applied to the HOA, the previous HOA, I don't want to say anything, you know, about who the people that are there now, we got permission to put that patio in, they approved our plans, we had no idea that we needed to come to the village as well, I know that's not an excuse, I, I understand we're going to have to pay a fine or whatever.
No, I feel bad for you, I, I, yeah.
This puts us in a terrible situation, because we certainly wouldn't have done it if we knew we weren't supposed to. But now, you're talking about, like, making us, like, rip up, it's, it's a lot of money, you know? We pay a lot of money to live here, it's, it's just not what we envisioned, you know, being in a nice town.
Look, and I, I think that our, our role as a planning board is not to be punitive, okay? Our role is to try to help applicants resolve situations. We're a problem-solving board. So our effort may be unsuccessful, it may start a dialogue that will have to be resolved in some other way. But, but I think what we're going to try to do is elicit some of these ideas and, and at least try to help mark a direction where this issue may be, be ameliorated or not resolved, and, and that, I think, would be a positive thing to be able to do. So we're not interested in ripping up every, anyone's lawn, just for the sake of upholding the law. In fact, I think that some of these provisions, I know because I draft a lot of contracts, so I draft a lot of these provisions, very often they are mechanisms just to force parties back to the, to the oversight, the administrative agencies, so that they know what's going on. Because if you didn't have that provision, it would be sort of a free-for-all. If there is a prohibition against the use of land to do certain things, and then it needs to be done, it's going to end up being, that's why you're back before us, is because of that provision. Otherwise, there would be an argument that we don't have to go back to these agencies at all, we can just do whatever the heck we want to do. So I think that, that sometimes contracts are drafted not with the idea of being punitive, but to be mechanisms to, to, to create oversight. And so, look, things are, the fact that you're back here is where you should be for the moment. There may be a long-term solution where there, there may be another organ of government to address, to deal with it definitively, but I think we can start here and try to address the, you know, what we can address, so...
Right, but, and I understand all of that, I just want you to realize that it wasn't just one situation, that the, all these patios, everyone has a different story and idea of how and why they got put in, and I'm sure there were some that were put in without permission from anyone, but there are lots of people who applied to whatever the HOA makeup was at the time, and we got permission to put it in. Again, we were wrong, we didn't realize we had to come to the village also, but...
But, but to you, but I think to your point and to your colleague's point, you, you went through the due process that you thought was available to you to do what you wanted to do, and you did it. And, and I guess what's being realized is that, well, it wasn't complete.
Right.
Okay. But we obviously were very concerned about that, and we're very sympathetic with that, that you have to deal with this sort of situation at all. I think your perspectives are, really do put in perspective the complexity of this issue, that there are really no white hats or black hats here, it's just a situation that we're going to have to get through. But I think we'll be able to do it, and, and at least start the ball rolling in a direction that can be, you know, helpful, and so why don't we have a resolution for a proposal?
One more, one more point, and then she points away. First, is that, is that, you know, you, you see even in, you know, my, my letter and, and in the resolutions themselves, there's a constant emphasis on amendment, okay? So, you know, you don't necessarily want the dead hand, there's a dead hand rule, you don't want, you know, something that was written at one time to control us necessarily forever, and we see that each of these, each, each, you know, year or two, there was a resolution amending the site plan. So as time went on, and I think Chairman Goodman is really recognizing this, conditions change, things change, and, and to mix my metaphor, it's, it's really almost like a, like a living organism, the site plan. It's not, it's not, it's not a crystal, it's, it's really a living thing, and it does get changed, it does get amended, because circumstances change, you know, the facts on the grounds change, and there's a need, a need to recognize that. My final point is, I did bring our, we did bring our terrific engineer, and I think if, with the board's permission, I would, I would like to, you know, ask if she may speak as well.
Sure, go ahead.
Good evening, chair and members of the board, my name is Lauren McMahon, I'm a professional engineer and project manager with Lang and Engineering. We were retained to come up with this number of how much area's been added and how many homes expanded. And when I say expanded, you know, I just want to make clear that there are homes that, when we compared against the architectural plans, it might have been a 10-foot wide swath that's eight inches over, and we did a very in-depth, this was no easy feat to go through 110 homes, look at, there were 18 different unit types with different allowable square footages, and then take the measurements of what's there and compare them. So once that were over, we definitely had to say they were over, but I'm just curious if you guys have seen the memo, or...
Yeah, yeah, and, and actually, it's, so, as I understand this, because I see the chart that says additional impervious surface, and you have some that are like 170, and you have some that are like 30, now, does each individual type of unit also have a, a restriction on what they can do? I mean, what we're talking about is a whole sort of, sort of homeowners association, homeowner-wide sort of impervious surface, but, but when you were doing your analysis, is each individual home also subject to, like, restrictions on whether they can put patios in, or how big the patios can be?
Well, so each unit type had a proposed patio that we compared against, but I don't think that there were any specific restrictions other than what was in that form that said no additional patios can be, you know, expanded without approval.
Were you able to get any sense of, because I do have sympathy for those, like, the two members of the community who just spoke, you know, one inherited a problem, I get that, one seems to have gone through the due diligence that she saw fit to do it, you know, it stinks. Were you able to get any sense of, like, how many of these homes were non-conforming upon being built and then were subsequently expanded? Does that make sense? Meaning, you know, were built by the sponsor, by the developer, versus were afterwards expanded?
No, we just looked at the condition from our field visit, which was October 4th, and then compared that against the approved architectural plans. But then, yeah, just, just to further state, so there were three homes that were over 200 square feet, two were about 200, and one was the outlier of 450. So if you take those out of the equation, the average expansion is about 86 square feet. So if you take a patio that has a 30 or 37-foot length, some of those additions are, you know, about two, two-by-twos flagstones added. And then just one other thing that I had noted, but this is for council to answer, but just in my experience as an engineer, I've been working for almost 10 years now, minor site plan changes are typically things that are secret-related, so, like, significant visual impacts, things that would, you know, affect the infrastructure, I'd need water sewer, additional electrical demand, things that would add additional emissions, so things that are kind of impactful or, or change the zoning, which, you know, I don't think any of these things relate to that, but that is definitely for your council to answer.
All right, understood, understood. Anyway, thank you for your input, I appreciate it.
All right.
Okay, let's, let's schedule this public hearing for next month.
Whereas the applicant, the Kingfield Lot Owners Association submitted an application for approval of an amended PUD site plan involving the installation of additional pervious surfaces, now therefore be it resolved that the planning board of the Village of Rybrook will hold a public hearing on June 12, 2025, at 6:30 in Village Hall. Be it further resolved that the applicant is hereby directed to comply with section 250-40 of the Village Code regarding notification of the public hearing.
Okay, I have a motion, a second?
Second.
Mr. Mendelson?
Yes.
Mr. Richmond?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Chairman Goodman?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll see you guys next month.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Chairman of the Board.